Select woman Lefkowitz and a selectman Flynn that we may have to call a special meeting on Wednesday to finish our agenda. Also, select woman Lefkowitz had the death of a very dear friend's father and will have to get off at 5:30. And we do have the appeals meeting at 6:30 on the same webex. So I'm just going to announce for the public, we will be ending the meeting at 5:30 tonight. Hopefully, we can get through as quickly as possible. I will do my best to be efficient. So I would just ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to say thank you for accommodating my personal, for accommodating that request today. Thank you.
Sure, of course. And I'm very sorry about your friend's dad.
Thank you.
I would ask to, before we begin the meeting, if we could just take a moment of silence for one of Fairfield's sons, Charlie Capalpo, who lost his battle with cancer. I just hope that our Fairfielders will keep Charlie's family in their thoughts and prayers. Thank you. All right, so our next item is, can I get a motion to consider an act upon the minutes of April 18th, 2022?
So moved.
Tom?
I seconded it, but I was on mute.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, I wonder as a point of order if we can waive the reading of items four through 11. If we're going to talk them through, I don't know that we need to.
Absolutely.
So I'm going to make him, yeah, I'll make a motion to waive the readings of items, actually, as far as we get. But for now, I'll say one through 11.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, so item number four, just quick, this is a purchasing authority contract for Jennings Beach Pavilion Facility, and we have on Anthony and Gerald Foley. Would you two, would either one of you would like to just briefly describe the item?
Sure, I could handle that. Through the ARPA process, I believe last May, June, July, one of the projects that was approved was renovations to the Jennings Beach Pavilion that's down there. Part of that project is to redo the siding and basically keep the building intact, but make it look a lot prettier than it is. We've replaced the windows already, but the siding is just one of the final touches we need to get on it. And this went out to bid, so all those are, all those requirements have been met. And we're just looking for approval on the contract.
Thank you, Anthony. I'll open up to the board.
Can we just confirm that the town attorney has looked at this and this went through the, the appropriate bid process, please?
This is Jim Baldwin, town attorney. That is correct, Mr. Flynn, as it is in the case of the other agreements that will be reviewed and considered by you today.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we put this out to bid. We had three bidders, and the company before you was the lowest qualified bidder for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is regarding $204,000 for engineering support services on analyzing potential mitigation solutions for our post-road, Thorpe Street and Reef Road due to flooding issues. This is part of our downtown resiliency. Remember me speaking about. I have, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have Bill Hurley and we have Gerald Foley on the line. Billy, do you want to just briefly describe? I know we've talked about this item quite a bit in the past, but just briefly update.
Oh, yeah, this, this is a continuation of our green infrastructure project where Maloney McBroom, which is now SLR, developed concept plans for green infrastructure. They did a report that was completed in 2019. And with the ARPA money, we were selecting them to continue that and also try to develop resiliency for our downtown and expand it just the areas, like you had mentioned before, you know, Carter Henry and Reef Road and, you know, Sherman Street and that downtown area there to try to resolve some of the flooding issues that we have downtown.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to open it up to the board for questions, comments.
So, Bill, this isn't to do the actual work. This is for a study to come back to us and tell us what the art of the possible is. Is that correct?
That, that's the first part of it, Tom. The, the second part is actually to have them develop plans. Originally, they were just going to do a study, and Bucky and myself decided that we want, we want more than just a study. The ARPA funds have to be spent, so we want a design as well. So they will give us one to two design proposals, which then we could put out to bid for this.
And where will the funding come for the actual work? Like, they're going to come back with a project and say, here are your two options. And then we have to go through this and then fund those projects. Is that correct?
We have 1.4 million that was approved last year with the ARPA money. And assuming roughly 200,000 for design, that gives us 1.2 million to, to implement the project.
Do you have any, any gut sense? Is that 1.2 million? Are we in the ballpark there, or are we already hearing, hey, this is going to be more than that?
No, we, we haven't gotten that far yet. The consultant has done, as I said, some studies from before. They've dipped their toe in the water, so to speak, for this part. But until we get the contract signed, they, they, they haven't really started the design yet.
Okay, so we could be, it could not be enough. The 1.2 could not be enough to move forward with this eventually.
There, there is a slight possibility of that, but we, we have at least, based on some other projects and depending on, you know, how far we want to go with it, that certainly is, is a good, I even quote, more than a starting point, but a solid, a solid figure to use.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
To that end, hi, would they, in the process of giving us a proposal or plans, are they able to tier in an à la carte kind of a way? In case, to Tom's point, it is not affordable, or?
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, we typically would do that. They would, they'll finish the design of the projects. We'll have an engineer's cost estimate at the time before we put it out to bid. If it's within reason or the range, we would, we'd put it out to bid. If it was higher than what we had anticipated, we have the option of doing a base bid with add alternates to give the town protection. And if it's something like, let's just say, I'm just going to throw out a number of 1,000 feet of 36-inch pipe, and we can only afford 800, well, there's no sense, you know, you got to do the 1,000. We'd have to come back to the board for that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, there's no further comment. I did, I apologize on the other two items. I'm opening up to public. I don't really notice if there is anyone on. But if anybody has, if there's anyone, member from the public who wanted to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. The next item, this one is the MOU agreement with our city of Bridgeport on the Fairchild Wheeler Detention Project. This is also the ARPA funds that we voted on for the Rooster River Project. So this is the MOU that was going along with the item that we approved, back when we approved the ARPA funding. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
And we have Attorney Baldwin and we have Bill Hurley on the line. Any comments, gentlemen?
Oh, just for, for our project there, this is something that's been in the works for a couple of months. We finally got all parties together and to agree on this memorandum of understanding. It allows the, the town to go into the Fairchild Wheeler Golf Course to implement the two proposed detention areas. We have a maintenance agreement with it where they would maintain the daily or short-term maintenance, and the long-term maintenance would be a 50-50 split, probably looking at at least a couple of decades, if not longer, before we have to do any significant maintenance.
I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
I don't have.
I'm good.
Okay, very good. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number seven, this is Water Pollution Control Authority. This is a transfer, now more than $325,000 from their, their fund balance for the Carriage Drive Sewer Line Extension Project. I do have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, and we have Attorney Baldwin on the line and John Bodie is on the line. I'll...
I'll, I'll start, if you'd like.
Yes, thanks, John.
Yep, yep. Carriage Drive residents, five out of the six that are on the road, got together. They all had failing septic systems. They approached the commission to put a sewer extension on their road. They went through the proper channels. They got the proper engineering done. And we would like to fund it, and they will pay back over 20 years, bonded at the, the existing town rate with a lien on their house. They will pay 4,250 to connect. And their calculated rate, based off water, will be just like everyone else. And there is one homeowner that is not going to hook up, but he can, or they can, whatever they choose, at the existing rate that the people are paying right now.
Thank you, John. That's helpful. I'm going to open up to the board for any questions.
I have some questions. I support this, and I serve on the WPCA, so some of this I already know the answers to. But I think it's, it's not only interesting for the public to understand, but there, there's a few good reasons why supporting this makes good sense, in my opinion. Environmentally, I think it'd be great if, if Mr. Bodie could touch on that. Or I saw some members of the, of the commissioner on the line. But to, to even at some point, and if now is not the appropriate time to talk about how this process works, I think it would be helpful in terms of WPCA and how they spend their money. But if, if, if we could just hear a little bit more about why this is a great idea, I think it would be helpful for people to understand, because we're, while we are talking about six residents, potentially, it does make, you know, it is a good decision for the town. So I just wanted to point that out, but...
There are failing septic systems, and to, and to get those onto a sewer system is not only good for the homeowner, for the environment, but also for the town as far as revenue. There's a lot of flooding in the area due to development. There's a lot of runoff. So it's a win-win, really. It's your help of the environment and you're helping the, you're helping the residents. I mean, to replace a septic system, it's 20 to $30,000.
And as you mentioned, John, they're going to be paying the town, the WPCA back.
Absolutely. Over 20 years bonded at the existing town rate right now, yes. There's a, there'll be a lien on their property. Correct.
Very good.
And, and question just about oversight. As this project is happening, who is the person that is really kind of managing this project? It's, it's one of so many that are, are happening through the WPCA. So what, how, can someone just describe the process of oversight, project oversight?
I think they would have to getting inspections on the work done as it goes. I'm not, I'm not up to speed on that completely, but that would be my understanding.
Yeah, this is, this is town attorney Jim Baldwin. That's correct. Like any, any project like this, it, it goes through the permitting process, and, and there may be a site monitor assigned to it through the DPW or, or conservation even. So all those kind of standard protocols will be in place here. And, and it is going to go out to an RFP, assuming that this is approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance.
I don't have any questions on this one.
I'm all good.
All right, very good. Is there any comments from the public on this matter? I see there's some members, as Nancy mentioned, from WPCA. Did anyone want to make a comment, or we're just here for support?
Here, here for support.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Because, because that's just the kind of committee we are.
That's awesome. Well, you do, you do good work, and we do appreciate it. And we appreciate you taking the time to be on the meeting, too. There's no further comment, and there's no public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item, there's two, actually, eight and nine, which we're going to take together because they're related. And so this, we also have John Bodie on this. This is WPCA as well. And so the first is a bond for $2.4 million for the East Trunk Wetlands Crossing Project, issuing the bonds for those. And then item number nine is the resolution, the supplemental resolution attached with this item. So can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up. John, do you want to just speak a little bit to this item?
Sure. The East Trunk carries two-thirds of the town's sewage from various parts of the town. There's a 36-inch line on the metro side, and there's a 36-inch pipe on Kenwood Avenue. Across the wetlands, it's 33 inches. During heavy rains, we get a lot of pecking there. We get backups upstream of the metro center along the Kings Highway, I-95 corridor, along Haley, Brentwood, Berwick, and beyond. So adding in the, the additional hotels and whatever they're going to put at the metro center is going to put more floor into that pipe and cause more of a bottleneck and cause more of an issue. If we just put, replace that 33-inch section with a 36, we smooth it out. We alleviate those problems, and we allow the metro center to develop and, and enter into the system.
Thank you, John. Obviously, this is an important sewer project, and it does feed a lot of different areas. It's an important issue. We just also have bond council on, and we have a town attorney on if there's any questions from the board on any of this, on either one of those items. But I will take each item up separately for votes, but I just want us to have the discussions together.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So this is for...
John Stastrom, you're on mute. I, I don't know if you were speaking, but... I still can't hear you. Sorry.
Is John on?
Nope. I don't know what's wrong. We can't hear you. Uh-oh. It's not working. Sometimes it's on your, I don't know, it's on your computer, or you're, you're not calling in, right? You're not using the call-in line?
It's a star number.
Oh, it's a cell number?
No, I don't know if it, I'm just saying that sometimes if he's got the phone and he uses a star and a certain number, I don't know.
Brenda, this is Jared. I don't know if this is what he was going to address, but I can add something to this, just to differentiate between the two resolutions.
Okay.
The, the first one is the, you know, the typical bonding and appropriation authorization. And the second one is the, an agreement, basically laying out an agreement between the town and the WPCA. So the town is going, is going to be the one who issued, who, who bonds the money. However, this agreement says that the WPCA is responsible for essentially paying, reimbursing us for the amount of the debt service on, on that bond. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's what John Stastrom was going to say or not, but...
He said yes.
Okay, good.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Jared. That's very helpful.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
Yeah, so I do have a question on this, for this. Given what you just said, Jared, and thanks, I think you explained that well. Did WPCA also vote on this so that they have agreed that they will pay the bond, the bond back through the town for this?
John Bodie, do you want to answer that? My understanding is that they voted on the item, and I believe that they voted on this as, as I laid it out, that this would be a debt service cost to them.
The chairman's on.
Right.
Mark, do you want to comment?
Yeah, no, we have officially voted on the, on the Wetland Crossing Project. The, we, we've had some pretty extensive conversations on the pump station. And I believe that's on this month's agenda.
So we voted on the Wetlands project, so that one, I mean, we are voting on it, right? That one, you've actually said yes, and you also agree that you're going to pay the town back for the bonds. The other one, you're saying you haven't officially voted on that one yet. Is that...
Yeah, yeah. So that's on our pipeline report.
Yeah, so I, I'm not comfortable voting for something before you guys have voted on it, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I have no problems with the other one.
So you're not comfortable, excuse me, with item number nine, Tom?
I believe it's item number 10 that they have not, is that right, John? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Well, 10 and 11 are... Those are different.
And I guess the question is, what does it push back? Because I agree with Tom, you know, not having that...
It's, 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 it's no problem whatsoever. I think this is, is just a, was a prioritization process of what are the, kind of the immediate projects for the WPCA and to line up the financing. And, and we're happy to get it approved internally this month and then bring it back next month on the Fairfield Beach Road project.
So what are, what are we saying, then, that items eight, nine, 10, and 11 need to be postponed?
No, I think it's only number 10 and 11.
We're on item eight and nine now. We're not on those other items.
He, I asked the question, and then he came back and answered it for both. That's all I'm saying. So I think because WPCA is fine, they have voted on the East Trunk Wetlands Crossing Project. They've said that's a priority. John, did you guys, you voted to ask for the bonds from the town, and you guys will be responsible for those bonds, correct?
Yes, correct.
Then that's, then eight and nine is fine. 10 and 11, I would say, is not fine.
Okay, so let's just deal with eight and nine, as we have those of a motion and second. And then when we get to that, we'll talk about that.
And the motion on the table is for item eight, correct?
Eight and, yes. Well, eight and nine, we were taking up together as discussion purposes, but I'm going to split them out separately for votes. So right now, we have a motion on eight and a second.
And I have no further questions from a, a board perspective, for me.
No, I'm, I'm fine with everything that's been communicated and supplied.
Okay, is there any comments from the public on the site? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nancy?
Yep, aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously on item number eight. Item number nine, which is associated with, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion on this item?
None for me.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public on this item?
I wanted one question on this item.
Sure.
Then, and forgive me, I should have asked it a little bit earlier. I'm assuming this is a 20-year bond. Jared, can you confirm that for me? Yeah, okay. John Stastrom, give me the thumbs up. Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of this item?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so then the discussion is that we would, the board would prefer to wait for the WPCA to vote on item 10 and 11 prior to taking it up from the Board of Selectmen, so...
I can make a motion to table it to...
Wait a minute, though. Attorney Baldwin, is, what, what should the motion be?
Yeah, I, I, I think you, you table it to a date certain, which would be the, the next Board of Selectmen meeting, whenever that is, assuming the WPCA is going to vote in the interim.
Mark, when is your meeting?
No, we should table that till June.
Okay, till, all right, to a June, a, a meeting of the Board of Selectmen in June?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So a motion to postpone to Board of Selectmen meeting in June? Items 10 and 11.
I can second it if you made the motion.
Yep. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item passes unanimously. Okay, our next item, item number 12. I want to amend this item. There was just a mathematical mistake. It is to hear, this is a resolution, not, it's for appropriating, but not to a 74911. It is for 1,949,778. So again, that's 1,949,778.
And this is the 2.8 million is changing to that number, Brenda?
Yes, correct. So this is, so I just wanted to say that I'm going to amend it. So I'm going to ask for a motion to hear and consider or adopt a bond resolution entitled the resolution appropriating 1,949,778 for the cost of a townwide facility system upgrade and authorizing the issuance of bonds to find, finance such appropriation.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Somebody's going to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Nancy seconded. Very good. Thank you.
I thought you were making it official.
No, I'm sorry. I just wanted to amend, to amend the, the item. So that was an amended motion. Okay, so we have James Ryan on, on our line and Jared Smitsch. And we have John Stastrom also on the line. For any, do you want to, James, do you want to just talk a little bit about... Uh, for any, do you want to, James, do you want to just talk a little bit about what we're doing here?
Yes, sure. It's basically a, um, taking that town facilities-wide audit that we had and working on the priority ones that were the, the most urgent life safety type of items. Um, and you know, just to sum, sum of them up would be, you know, some basement ventilation and kitchen hoods and apparatus bay ventilation, some seismic analysis to such, to, to some of these essential buildings, meaning the firehouses and the police stations and, and such. And then that pretty much sums it up for the priority ones. Uh, and, and the soft costs.
Okay, thanks, James. Um, I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions.
So, James, this is a result of the study, the life safety system study that we paid for a year or two ago across the town properties, is that correct?
Yes.
And they came back, the consultants came back and said, you guys need to address these things throughout your town buildings just on life and safety issues for our employees and visiting members of the public. And then you guys went and took that and said, okay, how much is this going to cost to do? And then you went out and, and tell us a little bit about that process. You got, you got estimates you received in order to do this work. Fair?
Fair, yes. Silver Petrocelli gave us estimates as well. We paid them to do that. Um, and that's in that report that was shared a while back, January or February, and they gave us, they laid out a nice 10-year plan with soft costs, and this is really the first year of that. And you know, we, we obviously have a couple of other asks in there as well for the senior center renovations, and we also have some money left over from the audit itself, that ask, in case there were emergencies that we needed to take care of, if they found any emergencies right then and there. We had some money in there to do that, so there's money left over for that. And therefore that is the, like, the recalculation of, of her amendment, you know, and and their, and you know, and then, you know, so these are, they're soft costs as well. So that's, you know, they're, they just gave us a 30% average soft cost because that's what Silver Petrocelli normally uses as, you know, as a target.
When would this work begin?
Um, the process of hiring of architects, getting bid specs, and going out to bid on some of them would take some, a couple of months.
Okay. And for the rest of them, you'd think a longer period of time. But these are issues that need to be addressed based on the, that report.
Yes.
Okay, I will hold further questions for now. Nancy, I don't know if you have anything?
No.
Okay.
Do we have any reason to believe that any of these adjustments aren't going to last? This is a 20-year bond you're asking for here, correct?
Yeah, I, I think with, with anything, I, that some, most of these are infrastructure installments. So say the kitchen hood. Just take that for example, that, that we're going to add duck work and a new kitchen hood with makeup air and a makeup bear, you know, fan. Yeah, I think that's probably some safeties and, and you know, you know, a motor might go bad within the 20 years, but the infrastructure is still there. It's going to be new infrastructure that's still going to be in place.
Can I actually ask a question in thinking about what you just said?
Sure.
Um, maybe a little strange, but, so they've given us this report. Is there any, are we on the hook for having to do something? Are we liable if we don't do something? What's sort of the accountability if they've told us in the life and safety realm that something needs to be done? What is either their protection or ours in either doing it or not doing it? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yes.
Bucky, do you want to jump in on that?
Well, you know, won't you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. When you have studies like this conducted, it's a double-edged sword. Uh, you're getting an evaluation for your entire complement of buildings. But what emerges is these highlighted number one issues are either ADA, fire safety, security, or items like that. And you, you, once you have this report in your hand, items such as this are, are really, really important to address. So items two, three, four, and five, and there are five items, I don't know if you had a chance to read the report, it's extensive. But the items that came back to us, number one, highlighted in red, they have to be addressed. You can have OSHA violations, health violations, an array of different violations that can cause, cause some real heartburn, or worse, put us at risk. So these are the items that we absolutely must address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bucky. Any other additional questions from the body? Okay, seeing none. Is there any comments or questions, comments from the public?
I think, Brenda, the only thing I, I'll say is having gone through a lot of the town buildings and been part of the process that actually advocated for the study, the town has invested, as you well know, and rightfully so, a lot of money in the schools over the last 20 years and precious little into the town buildings. And, you know, I don't see particularly when it comes to the life safety issues that these items are optional or can be put off any longer. I think we need to address them for the, for the benefit of the employees and the safety of the people that traverse these buildings on a, on a a day-to-day basis, whether they be vendors or townspeople that are coming in to conduct business with the town.
Thank you. And I, I want to thank Bucky for bringing this this to my attention when he first came on, that we should be doing this, that it was important to invest the money in, in doing this report. And it's a valuable document, I think, for our community. So, thank you, Bucky.
Before we vote, one, one last question. I'm assuming that based on all the analysis and things that have been done, there's not wholesale changes that are being proposed over the course of this next many years for these town buildings. In other words, we're not going to mothball a building, change a building dramatically. We're not going to address issues and then two years later say, by the way, we're no longer going to use that facility anymore. Can you just confirm that?
Well, I can say this, Tom. You don't, you really don't have a choice. If these buildings are being used for the next two years, the town is at risk. Uh, the employees who use these buildings are at risk. And if, if there is a notion that the use of these buildings will change in a year and a half or two years, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah. Yep, that's what I presumed and thought.
You're, you're also touching on kind of a deeper heart of what I was getting at. If we're now committed, if this goes through, which I do support them for the same reasons, and then something, God forbid, happens to an employee or there's some mishap, are we protected because we are actively now involved in the upgrade? Or making the safety, taking the necessary safety precautions? Is there any cost benefit in that regard?
I think there would, that would be a question for Attorney Baldwin.
Uh, I'm, I'm trying to actually wrap my head around this one because I'm not, I'm not intimate with, with the, the project. So you'd have to explain to me.
Well, I guess what I could ask it in a different way. The fact is, if there are some buildings that are life safety things that are kind of immediate, is there any point in cease and desist and functioning to protect the town? Or are we protected just by the mere act of, of now engaging in the remediation or the fixing or the bettering or what have you?
I think it's very situational and, and it depends on the particular circumstances based on what I've heard. It's important to address these issues sooner rather than later. And by doing so, you're mitigating your risk. So, so it sounds like it's the right thing to do.
In the event of a claim, by doing this, by discussing this this evening, by funding this, and by engaging in a, a process of addressing all of these issues once we know about them, I think should something occur, they would all be of benefit to us in, in the event of a lawsuit.
Yeah, the, the reality is, Attorney Baldwin, again, is you can't, you can't prevent a lawsuit from being filed, but the, the defenses that can be asserted in each situation is kind of unique or particular to that claim. So it may or may not help in defending any such claims, should they be brought, but certainly you're looking to mitigate the potential for such claims being filed. So it makes perfect sense from that kind of broad perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any additional questions from the body? Is there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Our next item is item number 13. This is to hear and consider a bond resolution regarding the emergency radio project, authorizing a grant to reimburse their 3,500 for such appropriation, such appropriation. And can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, very good, thank you. We have Chief Calamars and Chief McCarthy both on the line. This is a familiar, we also have Deputy Chief Karen Dunn. Thank you for being here. This is an item you've heard so much about. We've talked about this probably more than any item in the past year. And we had announced that we did, were awarded a $3.5 million grant, federal grant toward this project. And the project itself costs $7 million. And the, the first 3.5 would provide the infrastructure for the project, and the other part of the project would actually allow our first responders to have the radios and all the equipment to be able to utilize it for their safety and for the safety of the public. I am going to open it up to either chiefs who wants to jump in and to sort of give a quick overview of this, or do you want me just to open it up to the board, considering we've talked about this quite a bit?
Madam First Select Woman, I think that-
Can't hear you, Chief.
Yeah, for benefit of the public record, I think the, the chief should just basically step us through this quickly.
Chief, Chief Calamars? Okay.
You can hear me okay?
Yeah, I couldn't hear you before, sure.
So thank you to the board for allowing me to propose this and, and for your support in this.
You're back off again.
I think you're having a little connection issue, Chief. Freezing a little bit. So I think I'm gonna, are you? Chief?
Any better?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. Uh, so this proposal, as the First Select Woman indicated, has been out there for a little while. We were grateful to get the 3.5 million from the grant from Blumenthal's office. And this would be for a replacement of our public safety radios for fire and police. Chief McCarthy, you want to add anything?
Just a, a couple of things. It's important to note that this has been in the capital forecast for probably four or five years, and we have suspended maintaining, or suspended replacing critical infrastructure in our radio systems in anticipation of this project moving forward. Additionally, way back in the early teens, we got $6 million of federal funding that allowed us to build the backbone of this system, which created the opportunity for us to build onto the state system and, and get their support of that going forward. So it provides interoperability not only in the town of Fairfield, but our mutual aid partners and as well as state, and getting a lot of support from the state of Connecticut in their Department of Telecommunications. So it is certainly a, a big improvement for public safety communications.
And just to kind of remind the members and anyone who might be listening, because we have talked about this project quite a bit. The, the prod, the project, we, basically Fairfield's communication systems is antiquated. Every surrounding community around us is, has brand-new equipment. They're all signed into the state service. And as Chief Dunn and our two chiefs explained during workshop meetings and some other Capitol meetings, that we're, we're like traveling to buy radios literally on like eBay, trying to find parts for the old radio system. And fairly soon enough, we're going to be blocked out of being able to have interconnectivity with the surrounding communities, which is obviously going to put not only our public at risk, but also our first responders. So, I mean, it is, it's just, it's a safety issue and they need to communicate with each other. They need to communicate with our municipal aid partners. And they need to be able to communicate effectively with, with the technology that everyone else has. That's, I guess it's the simplest way to put it.
Just to add on that, if you recall, the 9/11 Commission, the number one recommendation of the 9/11 Commission after that event in 2001 was to improve interoperability between public safety entities. And it's taken us 20 years to get there, 22 years to get there, but we're there. And this is vitally important for us to be able to communicate, not only in town, but as the First Select Woman said, we rely on mutual aid every day on I-95. And with Bridgeport and Westport coming in, or us going to Bridgeport and Westport, providing mutual aid. And we need to be on the same platform.
Madam First Select Woman, if, if I might-
Sure.
The chiefs were kind enough, I don't know, it's been quite some time now, maybe two years ago, to bring me in on this issue as kind of a guinea pig and step me through a lot of the issues and challenges and opportunities that this that their current state represented and, and what they were trying to go to, to their future states. To your earlier comments, I'm very familiar with it. I think one of the things, Chief, not that we want to Brad, broadcast this widely or anything, but I think that there are some spots in town, as I recall presently, that have very challenged radio communications, which, which does cause a dangerous situation. So, so once again, we're in a situation where we, we need to do something here. Is that, could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure, you know, we can, we can discuss the failures. There are failures every day with regards to our radio system. You know, in storms, it's worse than on, on regular days, missed or failed communications between officers, between officers and dispatch. And, you know, which, our technology is old. It was put together in the, in the 90s. And it's, it's just time to, to replace it and get up to speed with the technology that we have. And it's, it's just time to, to replace it and get up to speed with the technology that we have.
I, I want to make sure, how long are these, is this system supposed to last? What, and what's kind of the annual maintenance that we're signing up here for on this?
So as far as the, the radios themselves?
The, the whole system as a whole. I just, I understand you need to replace radios more frequently than the system. But I just want to know the system itself. How long is it supposed to last?
To my understanding, the radio, the radio, the radios that we're going on to are. The software to them is sustained by the state. So they kind of support the infrastructure and we would then support the end user. While the infrastructure has to be put in place by us for starters. As the, I guess, as. As upgrades are necessary, the state takes care of those upgrades.
Right. So we have a bond in front of us that says this is going to last ten years. Is, are, are these items going to last us ten years? I don't want to be paying for them when they're out of service.
If I can jump in Chief, certainly fire department experience with mobiles and portables. We get better than ten year life out of radios. And as Chief Calamars pointed out, the backbone infrastructure will be maintained by the state of Connecticut. So we are, we are responsible for the subscriber units that operate in the field. And our history has been that we get greater than ten years service out of them. And I think we talked about this earlier. There will be some failures, some replacements due to damage. But those will be few and far between. Extended warranty for the project that's included in the price that brings us out to a year seven.
And yeah, and I think you've said previously that the cost to replace anything for damage or whatever. Will be borne within the operating costs of the departments, correct?
Typically how we do it, yes.
Okay. I have no further questions right now.
Okay. Nancy, do you have anything?
Nope.
One, one, yeah, one comment. I'd like to congratulate the departments and the administration. I know one of the reasons I said I heard about this a couple of years ago now was that you guys looked, you guys and ladies. Looked long and hard to find grants to help off, offset the cost of this. And I know there was a, a couple of failed attempts and then finally you were able to, to find a grant to get half of it. So although it's a big number, I'm really happy with it that you guys were able to do that. And I congratulate you on bringing that home and, and the team that put that together.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to especially recognize Captain Koval, who spent a lot of time writing this and working on this. I know a lot of people contributed, but he did put in, I think, the, the, the yeoman, some hard amount of effort. Into getting this done. So kudos to Captain Koval. Three point five million, it's a, it's a nice thing to have.
Yeah.
Are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. Bring it back to the body. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you Chiefs.
Thank you.
Chiefs? Okay, very good. Okay, we are doing pretty good on time. All right, so our next item, this is. Item, item number fourteen. This, can I get a motion for a resolution appropriating? Two point two five oh for a tide gate system project issuing bonds for the period of twenty years.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Bishop is on the line. I know we've talked about the tide gates for quite a while. But if you could just run it down, Mr. Bishop for the board, that'd be great.
Sure. Thank you all. Can you hear me clear?
Sure. Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you all. This tide gate project similar to the ones I've spoken about recently under other, other budget discussions. Is the Pine Creek Tide Gate just north of Kiwanis Field off Old Dam Road. It's a triple tide gate, self-regulating tide gate system. That drains all of lower Pine Creek to its terminus in the sound. They were originally installed in nineteen eighty, replaced in ninety-nine. And it also underwent some service repairs in twenty-ten and twenty-twelve. Similar to the other projects, they are at the end of their lifetime. And I know this started in twenty-nineteen with my predecessor and then kind of stalled, I guess you could say. And they're coming back to me to push this forward. We do have conditional approval from Connecticut D E P at this point. And we are currently in a holding pattern, working with the state historic preservation office. Which we need approval for before we could get the final approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. The purpose, what'll happen with this project is a replacement. There's exist, three existing S R Ts that will be replaced by five. The five new tide gates will re, realign the channel in its natural flow pattern. That will also give us more capacity to regulate upper and lower tidal marsh systems in Pine Creek. Which I think only helps us in the future with higher intensity volume storms. As I mentioned, the, the working with the state historic preservation office shippo. We had conversations with recently. They're requiring two things which are factored into this request number. That the historic railroad bridge that is currently in the way of the new tide gates. Must be maintained to appear as a bridge and the original trusses that are historically significant. Are to be restored and remain on that location. So we're in that process now. And I think that's probably my quickest summary. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Tim. That's, that was very helpful. I'll open it up to the body for any questions?
Yeah. Silly question here. Well, first I've got a couple of things. Mr. Sastrum, I just want to make sure and I know you can't talk, so.
I can talk.
Oh, he's back.
You can't talk now. Beautiful. Quick question.
On the third device I went to.
There you go. Well, here's, here's the, I've had technological challenges myself in the past, so I get it. Here's, quickly for you, all these bonds that are before us this evening, standard. The only thing changing is really the duration of the bonds, but I want to make sure that everything is in, in standard form. And that you reviewed everything.
I would say these are all in standard form. The one that I couldn't speak about obviously was the W P C A one. And we have done this before when, where the town, because of the town's great credit rating and the W P C A doesn't issue its own bonds. The town issued bonds on behalf of the W P C A and then we will enter into this memorandum of understanding. Where the W P C A either through its fund balance or user fields will agree to, agree to reimburse the town. So you've already passed that one when I couldn't talk. A couple of the upcoming ones, also you will notice that the appropriation is more than the authorization. Because the town already knows it is receiving grant funds and we're reflecting that in the bond resolution. So those two nuances are, are covered in the various resolutions you have tonight.
Okay, nothing we should be concerned about based on them all being consistent with past practice, is that correct?
They're all consistent with past practice.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then going back, so in layman's terms. Doing this tide gate, which doesn't sound thrilling or exciting at all, but needs to be done, what does it mean? What's the benefit?
The benefit is, it is a flood control structure. And we, the, the benefit is to avoid catastrophic failure. I would say the, the number one benefit, side effects are enhanced control for environmental quality. With the, the tidal, you know, tidal habitat of the marshland. You know, tidal waters moving in and out of the system. But number one would be flood control.
Is it fair to say that we're improving things and not just replacing what we already exist? I want to make sure we're getting more out of this than just, hey, we used to have this one. It's old. We're replacing it with something that's just going to give us the exact same benefit that the older one did.
Correct. Two improvements, major improvements to note. We are going from three, you know, pictured tubes or culverts. We're going from three to five. Similar engineering, but more capacity. So that's an improvement right there with, with more control with the structures themselves.
So that means, so that means we can handle more water more quickly should we have some of these massive storms? And get it out of there. So there's a direct benefit to the neighborhoods and to the community by doing that. Is that fair to say? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yes, no, that's, that is accurate.
Okay.
And then the second is, like I said, aligning the channel. Right now, it, it, there's a, it empties and, and flows into a curve, which was not the original alignment. I'm not sure why it was done that way, but just having that extra, you know, flow pattern. I, I think enhances the, the overall ease of water to move in and out as well.
Okay.
And I'd add that I, that I forgot to before was I'm in the process of working with the finance department. Specifically Terry Brown, the grant coordinator. We spoke with some people in the historic realm to look for and seek out grants. Towards the restoration of the historic railroad bridge as well. So hopefully somewhere in there, we could recoup some costs in that restoration. Might not be huge, but we're in that process of exploring that now.
Okay, and this has obviously been spoken about with the neighborhood and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I mean, it will when the time comes to notice it and, and we have some more. More facts on timing and whatnot, but that discussion of timing has, was part of the discussion with Connecticut D E P. Luckily, there's no immediate neighbors to our open space because it is pretty vast. But the closest would be on the old, old dam roadside. Since we're surrounded by water in the, in the former landfill and solar array to the north. It's, it's pretty quiet immediately adjacent.
Right. Great. Thank you so much for your commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you. Nancy, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that has any comment? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you all.
Item number fifteen. Can I get a motion to?
Can we wait for the reading?
I'm just going to do cursory, cursory. Resolution appropriating four hundred and fifty thousand for the cost of the transfer station repair project. Bond. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. We have John Cotell on the line as well as, I think Bucky, yes, still there. And we have Jared and our bond counsel, Mr. Stastrom. I will open it up. John, do you want to take it? Bucky, who wants to present?
Well. Let me say first of all that the report on the transfer station was conducted before my arrival here. It was conducted because it, there were, it was evident that there was a lack of investment in, in the transfer station. The, that report was extensive. And over the past year and a half or so, we've tried to do what we could in-house. But now we're at the point where some of these major components. Have to be addressed and have to be repaired or replaced. So John, you could, you could talk about the granular issues of this. But for the most part, that transfer station, which gets an awful lot of activity every day. Has to be maintained and you're paying now for decades of neglect. And addressing the needs of that facility.
John? You're on mute. You're on mute, John.
Hi. This is for repairs so that we can repair the overhead doors. There are seven overhead doors, which none of them work. There's a stairwell that needs to be replaced that has already failed a couple of times. That we've been band-aiding apart together. Fans for exhaust system to bring it up to code with the proper sensors or carbon monoxide and nitrogen dioxide. There's environmental issues with the drains not working. And having a lot of sludge and juices collect on the floor, becoming a hazard for slips and falls and odors. As well as then also the tipping floor repairs that'll eventually be addressed also where rebar is starting to show. If there's any specific questions, I can drill down into more if you'd like.
I do have some questions. I'll wait to see Nancy.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I'll open it up to the board for questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, thank you and thank you, Madam First Select Woman. Gentlemen, thanks for being here. I've heard a lot about the transfer station over the last couple of years. And a lot of the issues and challenges there. Does this amount of money extend the useful life of the transfer station? Forget just fixing what's wrong on a day-to-day basis. We're being asked to issue a bond for fifteen years. Does this transfer station have fifteen years of life left in it? Are we going to do this and then be told that the transfer station needs to be replaced completely?
No, they, well, first of all, just to replace it, try and replace it would be. Take years to try and figure that one out because this thing is used six days a week. Even these repairs have to be done while still maintaining operation of the transfer station in full. So the, you got a good structure there. It's just needs to be, you know, some mechanical issues. We just got done finishing the roof where, you know, we had water damage to these stairs that rusted. Rest of them, the metal to where you can see light through them. So yeah, it should carry at least fifteen years.
John, is this building going to be solid when we're done with this four hundred and fifty? Are, are you, you know, are we making this a building that we can be comfortable that our employees are safe working in it? And that we've addressed the issues?
Yes.
Can you answer that, John? You know, that building's been there for almost forty years, Tom.
Right.
And, and the bones of that building are, are excellent. It cost a lot of money to build that building. I was, I was a member of, of the group in the middle eighties that approved this whole system of transfer stations and all.
You were like fifteen years old then, right, John?
Yeah, yeah. But the bones are good or we wouldn't ask for these sort of funds. This money has to be invested in order to extend the life of this building. This building can last another thirty-five years if you just put these small amounts into these buildings such as this. I think at the time that building was built, it was almost four million dollars.
John, do we have a maintenance plan going forward? Maybe this is Mr. Ryan's question. We're going to put all this money in. Are we going to maintain these buildings going forward? Because it sounds like we didn't do that great a job doing that in situations like this.
As I said, Tom, we had, a, a plan was on my desk when I arrived here and it was extensive. We have a plan. There's not, this isn't a complicated. Uh there's not, this isn't a complicated building.
Right, I think so, yeah.
We we've done the electrical work, we're done, we're doing the roofing work, we have to seal the building as John's explained. And this budget uh addresses all those items that we think have to be done right now. Uh in order to uh maintain the usability of that building.
Great, thank you, I don't have, and and Mr. Sastrom has answered my questions. Uh regarding the bonds themselves, so.
Nancy, do you have anything?
She might be on mute. Nancy?
I was on mute and I was trying, I don't have anything additional.
Thank you, um is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, back to the body, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, we are doing really, really good, I'm excited, okay, next item. We might not have to come back on Wednesday, fingers crossed, okay, item number sixteen, um this is. Yep.
Officially waived until item ten, so I don't know if we need to, for the record, officially waive the reading of the.
Thing, so uh make a motion, asking for a motion uh for a ten-year bond. To um for four point one two five for the cost related to for a turf project at Roger Ludlow Middle School. Uh can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved, I'll second it.
Okay, very good, uh Anthony's on the line uh to talk about this, I just want to quickly add that. Um the working group, the capital working group uh that I put together has been meeting and meeting and these are all the items that you're uh basically. Seeing today are items that the group, uh two members of our board of finance, two members of our RTM. And myself and um the board of education and um finance departments uh had some general consensus on. You know, as we know, we've probably, I know the board has received a tremendous amount of emails over the past year regarding turf fields. Uh this is a very important item to uh many uh members of our community regarding our fields, uh the ability to use the fields more often. Uh to schedule games and such, and obviously turf fields can be used so much more. Uh than regular fields can because you don't have to worry about uh giving them time to rest and things like that or weather. So um these are, this was one of two fields that were identified by these groups. And this uh item actually was in the Capitol uh waterfall uh since two thousand seventeen. So we thought it would be a good idea to uh add this uh to try to get ahead of our needs, our turf needs, uh our field use needs. Uh we have a tremendous amount of uh which is good, we have a lot of kids playing sports and that's a good thing. And we want to be able to do our best to accommodate the additional use uh that is needed, now open it up, give it to Anthony to uh. Jump in, go ahead, Anthony.
Uh thank you, madam, for select woman, and you basically just took my whole presentation. With that being said, um this might be a question for Dave Kelly, if I hit the share button, will it actually share my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted, while I'm talking, I just wanted to throw this up on the screen so you guys could see it. Um this is the tentative design that we've been talking about for Ludlow Middle School. Um as you guys do know, and again, as the first select woman just um mentioned, um there's a big push for turf fields in our town. Um right now, we only have the one real public uh turf field at Tomlinson. Both of our high schools do have one turf field each, so that gives us three fields uh between Board of Ed and town. Um when you look at the surrounding neighborhoods, um you'll see that there are towns that have eight, nine or ten uh turf fields. Uh some of these towns are bigger than us, some are smaller than us, but we've definitely fallen behind as far as our facilities have gone. Um what we're looking to do here at uh Roger Ludlow Middle School is turf that backfield, essentially you have space for about a field and a half. Um with the concept we've laid out here, we're looking to fit a full-size multipurpose field. Um which would be used for a a number of sports, very much like uh Tomlinson Middle School, I think we have that line for eleven sports. Um you know, girls' field hockey, um lacrosse, boys and girls, both soccer. Um we have football here and then one of the most interesting and I I think. One of the the nicest parts of this would be to overlay a girl's softball field um down in the corner, you'll see. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to play these things all at the same time, um but this would give us a turf softball field or a turf. Little league field, so now if the varsity team um got rained out over at Sturgis, you know, day like today, they could potentially slide up over here. Um and play a game, um we would like to put lights on this location, there are lights at Fairfield Ludlow High School already. Um this location is right next to I ninety-five, so it is uh very accessible um. From from a a tournament standpoint, if you were to host a tournament on the Ludlow property, uh you would have use of both of these fields potentially. Um you'll see that we were looking at expanding parking, we would have to relocate locate the ropes course that's there. Um but I am, I'm happy to take any initial questions, again, we're gonna put this out to RFP. Um we will go through the design phase, so that again, this is a concept that we've put together, but it may change. Um based upon, you know, uh whatever our designer ends up, you know, seeing, maybe we overlooked something here. Um but this would be a huge step up for us, it would increase our number of usable hours to about five hundred, five hundred and fifty. Additional hours outside of what we're already booking, which would um hopefully free up some of the bottleneck we have on our. Multipurpose fields, not our, not necessarily our ball diamonds, but our multipurpose fields.
I I have a couple of questions, actually.
Sure, go right ahead, Nancy.
Um one, I would just like to know, um is it possible to know who those committee members are making the decisions about that, just for the record? Um if you could share that, um if it's not now on the meeting, but it would just be great to know who's looking at the the capital projects and and making the call. Um wa- was there really any subjective nature to this field versus another field, just because we are getting inbound? Calls and emails and and turf is is something that i- is of great interest to so many in town, so I was just curious. You know, what went into this specific one with this group? And do we save anything by maybe doing a second field also, you know, kind of spending more now, but in the long run, does that? Do anything for us, those are my questions.
So I don't, I don't think the group question was directed to me, but I can answer the other questions or attempt to answer the other questions. As as uh the first luck woman mentioned, I've had this field on the waterfall chart um since at least two thousand seventeen. I've also had South Pine Creek and Sullivan Field on the list, um. Outside of that, again, I typically try to look five to seven years, um at that point, after we get the these other fields in. Again, I have those on for next year, um if the working group ends up uh putting them on there for next year, but. Um I would like to look at the other side of town, Fairfield Ward, uh that complex is a great facility. Um that it would be an ideal candidate for turf, but that does fall under the Board of Education, so. Um a little more complicated on that side of things, but there are other locations on the other side of town. Um Lower Tunksus Hill, which is currently a large baseball field, um and a multipurpose field in the outfield portion. Um. Again, a good location for a turf field, um there was potential of a turf field there back in the seventies. Um there was a lot of talk about things that were there, but um you know, kind of all fallen fallen along the wayside. Um and then obviously, I think another uh potential location on the other side of town is uh the Burrows Complex. Um the only thing with the Burrows Complex is you really are limited um with potential use for lights, only because the neighbors are right on top of that field. Think I got them all there.
Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Nancy, do you have other questions? I'll sit back and.
No, just at some point, it it would, it the working group, I was just wondering for the record if you could let us know, I know you said members of the Board of. Of Finance, but I was, I was curious if it was all who and. Who from the administration is is looking at these issues?
Are you talking directly about the the capital projects or the?
You had just said that your working group, that this was one of, so you mentioned the working group, so I just wanted to know for the record who that was.
Right, so the capital, I mentioned this um quite a few times uh during our meetings and also um. During the capital workshop that I was putting a working group together uh to uh identify, well, to put together our capital plan. Uh a town's cap- a five-year capital plan, it came to my attention through Jared Smith's um interactions with other uh CFOs that. Towns really should have a five-year capital plan, it's not set in stone, so to speak, but to have a five-year capital plan. And we've kind of been operating by the waterfall capital planning meeting where there's a lot of items discussed, um but. They would just be on the waterfall and then it was the directive of the first select person to just choose items off of that plan. For consideration by the town bodies, and I thought it would be more collaborative to have. Um two members of the Board of Finance, two members of the RTM and the chairwoman and chair vice chair of the Board of Ed. Collaborate, sit, you know, down and look at all of our capital needs, and so what we did was, we've been meeting. And we put together the twenty-two, twenty-three capital list and um we were going to reconvene in the fall. To work on the remaining four years, now obviously, you know, this is up for discussions and such like that, but these are all items that are already on lists. And we've had department heads come in and uh different things and uh we have a, I put sort of put in a bonding cap as well, so we're look. We're operating under that is, but this uh year, it's not even close to what um what I've been talking about, that'll be. I would imagine much more spirited discussions in the fall when we start working on the four-year. Um but the members are uh the Chairwoman of the Board of Finance, Lori Charlton, uh Jim Walsh and. Uh Mark McDermott from the RTM and Jeff Steele from the RTM and Christine Vitale. And Nick Asa, and they have Angelus and their group and their finance people and then our entire financial. Uh uh department too, and we have uh various department heads, it's sort of like a mini capital planning. Uh and asking for them to, you know, go back to their bodies and ask for consensus and information, but um. Uh does that answer your question, Nancy?
Yeah, it does, I was, I I knew exactly what the working committee was, I had only just really been asking for the specific people, so that I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Um is there any questions about the item, about this specific item?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
First of all, as I recall, Anthony, this was, was this the field that was damaged a few years ago? Um during a lacrosse tournament or something and there was an insurance claim and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, that it was.
And did we get paid out on that, so we're not out of pocket uh for any costs of of this field right now?
I believe that that, I don't know that that litigation had been uh finished, I'm I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah.
Town Attorney Jim Baldwin, the answer is yes, that litigation ended uh probably a year, year and a half ago, so that's been resolved.
And did we get paid, Jim? I don't remember, I want to make sure that we're not.
We we did, we did get compensation out of the uh the settlement, yes.
Okay, so we're not basically ripping up a field that taxpayers paid for to put down artificial turf on that field now. And wasting that money that we already spent.
You're not wasting the money that you already spent.
Yeah, okay, um Anthony, you have in short order a. I'm gonna call it a strategic plan, but it's a vision document that's coming out in the next, I would think, two, three months, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, master plan will be out this summer.
Thank you, master plan, so where did this fall on that master plan, what I'm, what I don't want to do is approve something like this going forward. And then have your master plan come out and say, actually, we should have done Ward, or we should have done Sullivan Field. Where he- is this been synced up and jived up with that?
Yeah, so all all our plans have been shared with the master planning group, so I had given them my waterfall chart. So they know, they know they've had this plan, they've seen this drawing here that we're looking at, um so they've incorporated this into their. Their mask, their overall plan, um in addition to other things that they've added, we've given them um. You know, planning and zoning's plan of conservation and development, um bike and pedestrian uh plans.
Did they agree with this, though? Do they agree, yeah, Anthony, did they come back and say, yeah, Anthony, with all the work we've done to date? We agree that this should be the priority, this field?
Yes, turf fields in this town should be the priority, yes, they do agree with that, um multipurpose fields should be the priority.
Do they agree with this location or they didn't opine on that?
They did not opine on that.
Is there any reason to believe that this isn't the location that they would pick? Why did you pick this location if they didn't opine on it?
Access, it's all about accessibility and again, to host a tournament on this, at this area. You have Ludlow High School turf field right there, you would now have Ludlow Middle School turf field right there. You would also have Tomlinson Middle School right there, that's three turf fields within, you know, less than a quarter of a mile, right off of ninety-five. Right next to your downtown area, there is not a better location for mul- a multi-field uh location. And again, we don't really have space in town currently, um where we can create a unity park like Trumble or even a veterans park like Norwalk. Where they have multiple fields or a calf pasture, um but this is a kind of a makeshift uh way to do that.
With your, um I remember when we started putting in, I don't even think you were the director at that point, Jay Lombardo might have been, but we started working with the school system. And putting in the turf fields for the football um teams?
Yep, I was here for that.
Yeah, um. And we approved it, we passed it, they were putting in the fields and all of a sudden we started getting inundated with. Uh thoughts that they were carcinogenic and all that, has that been considered here, Kurt, can you give us a little bit of? Uh history and best information you have on those issues at this present point in time?
Yeah, absolutely, um so I yeah, I fully expect that there will be people that come out to speak against um artificial turf. Um you know, best information that we have to go off of is still uh the Department of Health uh per Connecticut. Um where really everything is inconclusive, there's not one study right now that is saying. Um that there's any harm outside of ingesting um crumb rubber, and the crumb rubber that. W- we're not necessarily using crumb rubber, everything we've quoted here is for an encapsulated um crumb rubber, which is safer than just uh. You know, bare crumb rubber, and that's what our current three fields have on it, there are other alternatives, I mean, obviously, they're more expensive, but. Um you could go, you know, an alternate fill type uh situation where there's coconut husk. Um again, to do something like that, you've got to put in irrigation and that kind of defeats the whole purpose of an artificial field, you're irrigating it. Then, you know, there's gonna be days where it's closed, there's gonna be days when it's when it's cold and it's frozen and you can't play. Um you could go sand, again, sand, Westport just put a sand in, but it's field hockey only, that's typically how a field hockey field is made. Um you know, again, we're looking at multipurpose fields, so um to the health issue. There is no conclusive evidence that there is any health issue at the moment.
Do you um? I had another question here, what are we gonna save on annually on maintenance costs on these? Because that's another part of this, right, is there's a savings, first of all, there's the ability to use these fields. A lot more often than our existing fields because of the drainage issues, correct?
That's correct.
Secondly, there was an annual savings on not having to sod, cut the grass, reline them, do do we have a number on that? Forgive me, I'm trying to access my my backup, which I read this weekend, but I can't from my current.
Yeah, um so we spend about fifty thousand dollars just mowing, just maintaining Ludlow Middle School. That's not including any time we need to re-sod, re-sodding can run, you know, when we just redid, when we redid that field a few years ago from the damage. That was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, again, that's just re-sodding, um so that those are, those are big numbers.
Yeah.
Every year, but.
And we do currently host a couple, at least one tournament I'm aware of, I think Fast hopes hosts a tournament there, don't they?
They did in the past, I don't know that they've been doing it lately, uh covid covid hit them pretty hard. Um and then I believe they did host something, but it was a much smaller scale, um we do host Stick uh Sticks for Soldiers. Uh the lacrosse tournament, that does play at that location as well, they they get a few other fields from Fairfield U and Wakeman and um a couple others. But um those are really the big tournaments that, you know, are taking place now, not to say that we can't have other tournaments. I know, you know, Fairfield U Football would love to host some type of tournament in town, they, we just don't have. in town. We just don't have the field space to do that, or the facilities to adequately facilitate it.
Yeah, one of the other things, thank you for that. One of the other things I recall when we put in the, the football fields was that they were supposed to last, I don't even remember, X number of years, and, and this is going to be great, and we're going to get that back. And literally, it was about, I want to say, half the time, maybe a little bit more. I can see by the smile on your face, you know where I'm going with this, that they lasted. So what can we expect on this in terms of length of duration of time that this field is going to last?
So most of these fields are getting an eight-year warranty. The lifespan is about 10 to 12 years, and then that's when they need, they typically start failing the G-force testing, which is the impact testing. And then they need to be replaced. And that was what we just did at our, at the two high schools and Tomlinson. We replaced them in 15, 16, and 17. So those will be coming up, you know, pretty much in the next five years or so to be replaced again.
So was it the same price point I, when you had to replace them? I mean, factor out inflation, but, you know, you're asking for $4 million bucks here. In 10 years, are we going to be looking at another $4 million bucks?
No. To replace Tomlinson, for example, that's about, it was about $1 million to build, but it was only, you know, $400 to replace. So you don't have to replace all the structural drainage and everything else that's there, unless obviously there was something that happened, but you know, in this case, it's, I, for lack of a better term, you're replacing the carpeting.
Yeah. Got it. I do want to agree with you. I got involved in this issue locally last spring, some, some, some of the leagues contacted me, and I went around and toured all the fields in town. I was familiar with Fairfield National Little League, and that, I had coached there for years. You're absolutely correct. The fields in town in comparison to a lot of other towns are not, not in good shape. There, there's so many towns, both smaller and larger, that have so much nicer and, quite frankly, safer facilities than we, than we currently provide for both. You know, we talked about youth, and you mentioned that, but also there's adult leagues and things like that that use these fields as well that I've noted. But it, it does become when your child or whatever is on a regional team and you're going to these other places, it does hit you square in the face that Fairfield hasn't invested in or maintained its fields the way they, they probably should. My understanding is as well, talk a little bit about, there's an organization out there that is committed to raising funds towards this. If you are the first select woman, want to talk about
So I'll just jump in really quick, because I know Nancy says she has to go because she does have
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you know, there, there, what's the name of the group, Anthony? I always
Yeah, Fairfield Athletic Federation.
So they, they're committed, and other groups are committed to working to raise money, but we can talk more about that after. I do want to make sure Nancy can go to her event. I mean, her, wait, her shiva.
Yeah, I lost track of time. My apologies.
Technical questions on this item. I would like to open it up to the public for comment, if there is anyone, and then go to a vote, so we can end the meeting, and then we can reconvene on Wednesday at 3 o'clock for our remaining items. Sure, go ahead. Pete.
Peter.
Sure, go ahead, Peter.
Hi, Peter Tallman. I do support this, but I'm coming at this from another angle, and that's from Ledlow High School. As most people probably know by now, I know our Board of Ed knows. Ledlow probably has the worst athletic facilities in Fairfield County, with the possible exception of Bridgeport Central. This would be a huge benefit to Ledlow. They have one field. One field. They have 1,100 athletes, and they have one field. I realize this field is nearby, Sturgis is nearby, but Anthony runs a tight ship. As soon as it rains, the fields are closed. So while Ledlow kids are home playing video games, Ward is practicing. So that's pretty much it. I just hope that's weighed into the decision. It's not only a big benefit to the youth programs, but the high school programs also.
Thank you, Peter. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment before we go back to the board for a vote? Okay, saying none. Thank you, Peter, for taking the time to share your opinion. We're back to the body. Okay, well, I'm going to ask all in favor of this item.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and we almost made it, but we do have a couple of other items, so I'm going to ask that I'm going to make a public notice, and then we can send out a notice tomorrow. Jennifer will send out. So we'll have 24 hours' notice that we will have the remaining items on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen at 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday.
Hey, Brendan.
And I want to apologize to, to the Board of Ed and the Chairwoman for, for not being able to get to your item today.
Nancy, condolences to your friend and to yourself. Brendan, can I? Yeah, can I ask that we do put on my question on the agenda for Wednesday related to what agreement or what the town's doing with the organization, just so that's fully out there?
Right, we don't have a formal arrangement or agreement.
Yeah, what are the discussions been? What are you guys?
Happy to discuss that.
Yep. Okay.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for being here today, and thank you for taking the time. I know it was a lot, a big agenda, and I think we did pretty good. Motion to adjourn, please. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second it. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, Nancy, we're very sorry for your friend's loss.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, you take care.
Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.